Yeah. You can just grab it out of there.
I need a pen.
Testing, testing.
Test, test, test.
Are you ready?
Yeah, just getting a pen, maybe.
Go ahead. I have a print to copy, so I have a backup always.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Kipper, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bedford?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Fulton?
Here.
Mr. Grimm?
Here.
Mr. Violi?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number C. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
There are no public comments today, Mr. Violi.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes from July as submitted.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes, motion carried. Moving on to reports. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Violi, and I'd like to begin by wishing our board president, Mr. Violi, a very happy birthday. So let's give Mr. Violi a round of applause.
Thank you all.
Speech, speech.
Well, I was gonna save it for the positive reflection, but if you don't mind, I can say mine now.
Actually, we're gonna let's roll right into positive reflection.
I was just gonna say that a positive reflection last, at one of the previous meetings, Mr. TVPaw mentioned that when you turn sixty, you will be able to attend all of the, all of the sports activities for free. Is that correct? And that's not only just in our district, that's in our conference. Is that correct? So that's my positive reflection, other than I will just mention that, I'm just kidding around about that, but it's kind of a nice benefit for me, and I've joined an elite group of people that are sixty and over, so thank you all. But positive reflection for me would be, I have to think about my family and my kids that attended Streetsboro K through twelve and moved on to better things, and I want to just say thank you to the district, the teachers, and all the employees for their part in my children's success. So thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that. Mrs. Bedford, could I indulge you in sharing a positive?
Yeah, I'd love to. So I don't know if this was just Mr. McCann, because I also saw one from the Deffer staff, but there was, what is it, an info, a picture of all this, all of the special?
Julie.
I didn't see yours. I'll look for it.
He's coming tomorrow.
Okay.
I saw yours, Julie.
Let me finish, Julie. Let me finish. I figure. I, I just went right past the middle school. No. Anyway, I think it's really nice for the parents to have everything in one spot. I'm really glad that whoever started it, or if it was whoever did it and is going to be doing it, that it's really nice to have everything in one easy little snapshot, and I think the parents and the community appreciated it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bedford. Mr. Kipper?
Yes, my positive reflection from talking to Mr. Long about a couple of weeks ago, the WSTB had their fiftieth anniversary, and they celebrated it last month, and there is a very cool video out there, a documentary through the years, and I just, the positive reflection is such a great program to be a part of Streetsboro Schools.
Thank you, Kyle. Mr. Grimm?
There's just so many things. So I'm gonna pick something that I've been pretty well aware of over the summer, and that's things going on in our operations department, which includes transportation and our custodians. Operations has not only been an integral part of so many things in our district, both big and small, and even the small things are still big things, but they've continued to work over the summer. These are the people that typically don't get a summer break. They've been wrapping up various projects, taking part in safety training, preparing each building for the new school year, and planning out the best routes for our buses so that our kids get to school and back home safely. There's still a lot going on in operations. Every time you turn around, CJ, Andreas, the entire operations team is busy doing something. But as always, I just want to say, great job to operations. They've been pretty busy over the last few months.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Mr. Fulton?
Just like to thank the staff. The buildings are great, and the grounds look wonderful. I see children walking around, and they all seem pretty happy to me. That's a good thing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fulton.
I'm gonna keep mine very simple.
Uh-oh.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Very few words. I am incredibly thankful that so far, over the summer and the start of the school year, feels very normal.
Amen.
We're not masked, we're not, I mean, I pray that that continues, but I was here for the volleyball scrimmage today, and I came in the building, and it was like, normal. There were car washes going on this summer that the band did, that I stopped by, and I mean, just very normal. So that's gonna be my positive for today.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell.
You're welcome.
CJ?
My positive reflection is the operations staff, all summer long, they've been working extremely hard preparing the buildings, doing new, unique things, painting walls certain colors to make it more of an inviting place for our students. Just very creative things, creating new rock beds, making the whole campus look beautiful, renovating board offices, putting in speedways for preschool kids, all that good stuff. That does not go unnoticed, and we are extremely blessed to have the staff that we do here that cares about what these facilities look like.
Great, thank you, CJ, and thank you, board and fellow staff members, for sharing positive reflections. I'll share one quickly. There are so many, but today we held the first of two days for an administrative retreat. We held that at ESE of Cogga County, and we had our entire administrative team present. So if you didn't see an administrator around today, that's because I sequestered them all day, and I tired them out. But it was, I gotta tell you that it's, after today, it just kind of reinforces something that I've been talking about at the board office, and that is, the team that we have in place this year, moving forward, we are really excited about, and they didn't disappoint today. It was an incredibly energizing meeting today. We, we had a lot of really purposeful activities. We really challenged our team today, and we're gonna do that again tomorrow. And I really appreciate the team that we have in place and the hard work that they've done. So thank you, administrative team. I really am excited to have you onboard. I think we're destined and on track to do some great things. So thank you. All right, moving on. We're gonna, I'm gonna invite Mr. Isle to come on up, and he's going to do two things. One, he's going to do a quick introduction of our new staff. I don't know how many of them are here, because I can't see, actually cannot see out in the audience. But he's going to read their names anyway, and then following that, we'll do a quick round of applause for our new staff members. And then, Mr. Isle will then move into a quick presentation on our ELA, our English Language Arts data. We have received preliminary results. So, Mr. Isle, thank you.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Dalbaugh.
Super excited?
Absolutely.
Super excited.
Super excited.
Wait, wait, you ready? Do it. Do it.
Pumped?
Pumped.
We're pumped. I was gonna save that for the next second, part of my presentation, but the preliminary English Language Arts results came out the morning of the July board meeting, and I ran over to Mike's office, and I said, hey, I'd really like to do this tonight. And he goes, yeah, you know, Matt, let's just wait till August. And I'm like, oh, okay, we'll wait till August. And then I've lost like an entire month of sleep, because I know that the August board meeting is always so much more attended than the July board meeting. To the masses of people that are here, I'll do my best to keep it short, and we'll get through it. But anyway, really important, you know, I'd like to introduce the new staff. Monday and Wednesday, we had our new staff orientation meetings, and, you know, when, when I came onboard a few years ago prior to the pandemic, Mike and I talked about, you know, what are we gonna have to do to really take Streetsboro to the next level? We were already tracking the right direction with, in lots of ways, and in lots of ways, we were already there, much better than a lot of other districts. But I talked about, you know, that the hiring practices really need to be spot on. We need to attract the best possible people. And shortly after that conversation, I had a conversation with another colleague, and we had a couple of key people that decided to leave the district, you know, in, early in my tenure, and that colleague said, you know, Matt, it seems like Streetsboro is like a really good starting point, you know, until people move on to bigger and better things. And I thought in the back of my mind, I'm like, you know what, I, I really believe strongly that Streetsboro is the, should and ought to be the landing spot. It should be the place that people aspire to, to, to want to come to, instead of just be a resume builder until they get on to bigger and better things. We are bigger and better things. And this year, I'm really proud to say that in several key places, we didn't find just somebody that was just looking for a resume builder. They wanted to come here, and this is where they wanted to, to, to stay. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's going to end up down the road, but it was, it was a different feel. So first off, I'm gonna start at the elementary level. I believe you already had the opportunity to meet Ms. Gwen Abraham, our new principal. She's in the audience, giving us a wave. She comes to us, you know, with extensive experience, leading children and teachers at the elementary level. And again, she's one of those people that I was just real, super excited and pumped to have join our team. And she hasn't disappointed in the last, last month and a half that she's been working, much of the time way off the clock. Just making sure that we're doing everything we need to do for our kids at Streetsboro Elementary School. Also, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce everybody, and if you're here, I, oh, the house lights came up. Thank you.
Our middle school's got the most.
Of course. Ally Bensy, she's not new to Streetsboro. I believe she started her career in Streetsboro several years ago as a student, and we were able to, as she finished up her student teaching last December, bring her in for the second semester and do some things for us. She's gonna be our new first grade teacher. Riley Cummings, intervention specialist at the elementary school, is new. Katie Hurst, preschool teacher, she's joining the elementary staff. Brianna Martin is going to be our new kindergarten teacher. She comes with several years of experience teaching kindergarten. She already has all of her letters training completed. And again, I'm just super excited that we were able to find somebody with that level of expertise to take care of our youngest children. Kohler Clendenning, I had the opportunity, I was on vacation the week that he was hired. He's going to be an intervention specialist at the high school. Yesterday, after I was making my rounds, I saw the football team up practicing on the football team, on the turf, and he was really engaged and really doing a nice job with those kids. And the conversation that I had, I can see his excitement is tenfold for the classroom, and those are the kind of people that we want to attract here at Streetsboro. Selena Dale, high school intervention specialist. I'd also like to introduce Kevin Kucla, our new math teacher at the high school. And now, oh, there's one more. Isabella Wagner is our new French teacher. Talk about commitment. Her flight was delayed Monday from family vacation. It was, and it was delayed till three o'clock in the morning, Tuesday morning, and she was there at eight o'clock in the morning for the second day of teacher orientation. I told her, I said, if there was ever a reason to bug out and not, not make it, that would have been one. She goes, no, I absolutely have to be here. I can't wait to get started. So that was really exciting. Now, for the middle school. Good job, Julie. We have Jessica Bell, our middle school guidance counselor. She joins us. The wealth of experience. Tangene Harris, our intervention specialist at the middle school. I'm not sure if she's here. Renisha Houchens, middle school counselor. I know she's in the audience. Renisha. Hannah Troyer, our art, new art teacher. She's also at the middle school. And last but not least, on the certified side, I'd like to welcome Lee Wepler, our new assistant principal at the high school. There's Lee. There he is. He's back there. And he has extensive service, serving kids out of state as a high school principal. And I know that there were some districts and some people that were very disappointed that he opted not to even interview. I had some back-channel conversations. They're like, what in the world did you offer Lee Wepler to get him to not want to interview with us? And I'm like, eh, no, it's the curriculum director. No, I'm joking. Just kidding. On the classified side, Angeline Sears is a new recess monitor at Deffer. Jay Johnson, our new recess monitor at the elementary school. Maya Israel is a classroom aide at the high school. John Hannan is an aide at the middle school. And Tamika Kent is one of our new bus drivers. So that's our list. Obviously, it's a pretty extensive list. We've been very busy.
Jen Wolfe at the FCS.
Well, she's not a new employee.
Yeah.
Jen Wolfe, she's been here forever. Everybody knows Jen Wolfe. But yes, Jen Wolfe, I should have said that. Jen Wolfe is our new assistant principal at the elementary school. How did she not make my list? Jen, my apologies.
Okay, you can bring your coffee bar.
Is it just regular coffee, or is it like one of those foo-foo drinks? Starbucks. Okay, none of that. Good stuff.
We learned today, one of our interesting tidbits about our new assistant principal, Mrs. Wolfe, that if you ever upset her in any way, coffee makes everything better for her. So, so board, if you, if you want to surprise Mrs. Wolfe a little, with a little treat,
Thank you, sir.
take her some coffee.
Skinny Monte.
I think she just likes coffee. There's like not a lot of, like bars they go, it was coffee.
So board, because I thought there were going to be thousands of people in the audience, these are just the slides printed for you on a, on a one sheet, so you don't have to turn it and crane your neck. But again, the 2022 English Language Arts results were posted mid-July. I did a quick comparison of where our district fell in the different categories. You know, we have limited, basic, proficient, accelerated, and advanced learners in the district. Spring of twenty-one, those dates, I'm sorry, those tests were kind of thrown on us very late, and we said, let's just use this as a baseline coming out of the pandemic, see where we land, see where we go. And, and all of the green highlights show that, you know, it was a positive change for us. We had twenty-four percent of our, of our student population in grades three through eight in the high school ELA, and of course, exam, that were limited in the spring of twenty-one, only twenty-three percent. So it was a one percent drop in limited. Twenty-four to twenty-two percent, that should have been a two percent drop, and I missed that. I'm not quite sure. Proficient, we had a two percent increase in scores from twenty-one to twenty-two, a three percent increase in accelerated, and we had a two percent drop in, in our advanced learners. Okay, so we grew from spring of twenty-twenty-one, from fifty-two percent proficient or above, to fifty-five percent. Okay, so it's good. We're trending in the right direction, but I also included a column for you that, what, what occurred in spring of twenty-nineteen, pre-pandemic. You can see where we were at prior to the pandemic. We knew, our administrative team, TBTs that I had the chance to speak with, we knew that it was gonna, it's gonna be tough to dig out of this, but we're trending in the right direction, and there's that. So the second slide, I wanted to see where we compared to the state averages. We were close in a lot of areas. The areas that are kind of looking at orangish color, we fell below the state average. The areas in green, we fell above the state average. All of those are in the proficient range, okay? But obviously, there's lots of room for us to improve and really dig in, and, and I would love to restate Mrs. Campbell's excitement for a normal year, knowing what we've talked about the last couple of days in our administrative retreats and things. You know, the, the building teams have, have a clear plan on how to get teachers collaborating and talking about the right kinds of things regarding academics. But of course, I have to look at the glass half-full. This isn't, I don't have a slide, but I'm always interested to see, okay, how did one cohort, cohort of students do from one year to the next? So if you take a look at like the third graders, for example, their average score was a six ninety-two, all right? What they did as a group from third grade to fourth grade, they grew twelve points, all right? So they went from a six ninety-two to seven oh-four, and hopefully my math is correct. I was doing this quickly late last night. Fourth grade, they went from a six ninety-eight. As fifth graders, they, they went to a level of seven-ten, which is just a few points shy of, of the average being in the accelerated range. Fifth grade, there's a slight drop. Sixth grade, six ninety, to seventh grade, a seven oh-four, that's a fourteen-point growth for that group, that cohort group of kids. So we're gonna really dig in and find out, you know, what did those teachers do at those grade levels to really, you know, get that level of growth with the same group of kids? The guys, that's, that's what we're really all about here. You know, academics are critically important, these test scores. They're good metrics to see, you know, how we're doing, but we're really worried about, and I lose sleep over, are we growing our kids? And I hope, hopefully, that, that last piece that I just added at the last minute helps give us just a bit of excitement for the new year, that we are trending in the right way and going in the right direction. So there's that. All right? Thanks, everybody, for your time. I appreciate it. Hopefully, that leaves enough time for Mr. Scarsapino's update.
Wow.
Singer.
So, Mr. Isle, I appreciate that last slide, because I think we all can acknowledge that this is not where we want to be. We all can acknowledge that we have a lot of growth. We have a lot of room for improvement. I will say that our staff is working very hard to take steps of improvement, towards improvement. Again, last year was another atypical year with COVID. That's not an excuse, but it's a fact. And the fact is, is that we're hoping, as Tracy pointed out, for much more normal year, so we can experience more growth. But I really appreciate that last bit of growth, and again, I'm not making an excuse, but I think sometimes we get caught up in negative data, and we know there's room to improve. There's nobody saying that we don't need to improve. We need to improve, period. We've got the things in place to be, and we're ready to really tackle, but I think that last slide really demonstrates that our kids are starting to recover. Maybe not as quickly as we want them to, but they are starting to recover. So I did want to say that, Matt, thank you. I would not have thought to have compared their growth with the same kids from pandemic to almost post-pandemic. And I, I will be really interested to see that same comparison this next year, to see if that growth is incremental. I suspect it will be, but thank you for including that last slide.
I was gonna say the same thing, is looking at it from the previous year to when they tested a year later, the way that we're cross-referencing, that, that is not how most people look at the data. And so, you know, when you see these reports in the newspaper or online, you know, everyone's looking at the grade level, but it's like, if you take a minute and really dive into it and understand what they look like, that student a year later, it's,
Right.
it's, there's growth.
There is growth. And for longest, for the longest time, you know, that's, you know, the, the tests from one grade level to the next were so incredibly different. It was really hard to compare. You know, we implemented MAP testing, where we give three benchmarks a year for the sole purpose of showing growth. So a kid could be way below grade level, for example, but if they're trending in the right way, you know, the, the data shows and the research supports that if we keep growing them, incrementally growing them, that there's a, a really good chance of them catching up. But it just, it just takes time, and oftentimes, it takes more than just a nine-month window that we have in traditional school calendars. So again, I'm super excited for the year, that we're back to some, some semblance of normal. And I'm really excited for our administrative team that spent so much time hiring the, the new staff and talking about the right things. I've seen their building plans already, and already I feel a change in the culture, just in a few short days of walking around the buildings, and most of the teachers aren't even in yet. So I can't wait for our speaker on Monday morning. We're kind of holding that person's name in secret, but I've heard this person before, and I just think we're, we are setting ourselves up for just a fantastic year.
And Matt, the MAP testing is done for every student, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There are a few exceptions, obviously, depending upon individual circumstances. We are, we don't do it for most eleventh and twelfth graders, for example.
But elementary, intermediate schools are having those testing?
K to eight for certain.
Okay.
There are some students in the ninth grade that obviously we don't need that data point to, to take, to show growth. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, folks. Thanks.
Okay, and if, does anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Isle before I move on? There's, I do have a final item that's not on the agenda. Okay, moving on then, it was fitting that Tracy brought up COVID, because I, I think it is fitting for me to give a brief update. I'm sure a lot of you will be surprised to know that we have not received any guidance yet. We've not received any guidance from the Porter's County Department of Health, any new guidance, rather. And I am, as you all know, part of a few different networks. The Cogga County guidance did come out, and the CDC just, actually, the Ohio Department of Health, I'm sorry, just had a press conference this morning, and, and the only update they gave was, is that there is no longer any guidance regarding using masks to stay and test to play. And if you remember what that means, is that if you are a close contact, in order to stay, you have to wear a mask for five days. And if you are out with COVID, you have to test after that fifth day in order to be able to participate in any type of extracurricular. That has been lifted. So hear that, again, that has been lifted. Additionally, the only guidance as of right now from the Ohio Department of Health is, if you are sick, stay home, and if you are positive, stay home for five days. That is it. That's the guidance we have as we have it today. Now, board, please know that we are still following our, our cleaning protocols. We're gonna still doing a lot of, a lot of the safety things that we've had in place for two years now. We've gotten good at it. CJ and Andreas's teams have gotten really good at sanitizing and cleaning those high-touch areas. But we have lifted almost all of our restrictions. We are still encouraging students and staff. If you're sick, you know, it doesn't matter if you stuck a swab up your nose or not. If you're sick, stay home, period. We don't want to get other people sick. Or if you kind of feel like maybe a little something's coming on, but you're not quite that sick yet, then put a mask on and wear a mask for the day. It's not a big deal. Nobody's gonna look down at you. Just keep us, let's try and keep us all safe and in school. And if you test positive, take care of yourself, take care of your family, stay home for five days, isolate yourself, and then as long as you're, as long as you don't have any symptoms on day six, we want you to come back and get back into business. Okay, so board, I promise that if an update comes before our next board meeting, that I'll send that out to all of you so that you're up to date. Because I know all of you field questions as well, so if I hear anything. And I know that Mrs. Devers and Mrs. Stockard, my administrative assistant, had a huge sigh of relief for me in when they said, when this guidance came out, because they spent, as you know, a ton of time last year tracking and notifying, and it was a full-time job, secondary to their regular jobs. So right now, knock on wood, we're moving forward with very little, if any, restrictions.
Great, greatness.
And, and that, unless there are some questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
So whose report will be longer today? CJ or, or Kyle?
Moving on to the.
I'll just say, I'm super pumped and excited that Mr. Isle left me time for my report this evening. So thank you. Very pumped.
It was kind. It was very kind.
Pumped and excited.
Whose will be longer?
We only mess with you guys because.
Get my clock out.
I'll bet my bottle of wild water.
Guys are rough.
Oh, a hundred percent.
All right. Not gonna take any suggestions or talking from the peanut gallery over there.
So we're not allowed to ask any questions?
I move on. That's correct. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you for, board, allowing me to present today. I have three topics for you is July general fund update, district-wide instrumental fee, and information about establishing a Fund Thirty-Five, and I will get into that. So July general fund activity, we had revenues of roughly six million, expenditures of two-point-two million, monthly revenues over expenditures of three-point-seven million. That seems like a lot. Now, please note that in July, we get roughly, in the past five years, we get about twenty percent of our revenue in one month. So it's really nineteen-point-five-five percent, the way it calculates. So roughly twenty percent in July, and then on top of that, as a refresher, in July, August, February, and March, we receive seventy percent of all revenues for, for the year. we receive 70% of all revenues for, for the year. So, the other eight months are running in pretty big deficits, but in total, um, the goal is to look at it at the end of the year. But, um, I like to just present it on a monthly basis to, for you guys. And so, the majority of the revenues are from our advanced tax settlements, and that's me communicating with the county, our foundation payments and disbursements for, for two payrolls, healthcare expenses, which are one of our largest expenses, and then termination severance payments, and I'll get into that a little bit later, meaning next. Um, I wanted to, uh, you'll be voting upon for, uh, district-wide instrumental fee today. And I did want to give a little background information, because it's kind of an update that the district has done in the past numerous years. It's typically been a $20 fee per semester for instruments, and these are the, your big instruments that, uh, the kiddos will play, uh, whether it's your tuba, it's not your standard clarinet, um, and those smaller instruments that are maybe a little bit more common. Um, it's for mainly the bigger instruments that maybe that a, a, a vendor may not rent out to a family. And the district has purchased. And I say has purchased, is that I communicate with the music educators, I started last year, about a district allocation of a certain amount for various large capital, uh, capital instrumental purchases that qualifies under P permanent improvement. And so, um, I am communicating with the music educators now to get those ordered for the allocation for this year. And a part of that is, obviously, we have increased costs, but a part of that is that we have these nice instruments that we're purchasing, and it's, the instrumental fee will be $50 a semester, uh, for this current year. And it's grades five through 12, not just the high school, because, um, if you, and I've noticed, and I think the community has noticed, that we are, the district is building, um, their band program and music program in general. And for me, this is important, it's not just Kyle Kiffer, uh, saying, hey, $50 a semester. I have talked to the music educators, and specifically Mr. Dawson, Mrs. Logan, and this fee has been go, I have talked to them. They, um, put their rubber stamp on it, and the fee is actually at the discretion of the two band directors. Um, and then this could be used for flexibility, this isn't just revenue for the district, it's not. It's flexibility for cleaning and repairs for the district-owned instruments at the end of the year and in the summer. So, you will see that to vote upon today.
Hey, Kyle, when you say district-wide, is that just kids that are in?
Yes.
Band, okay.
Yes.
And these are students who are not renting an instrument, it's not a fee on top of a rental?
Correct.
This is only a fee for using an instrument that we provide?
Provides.
And is there something in place for a student who may not financially be able to afford the $50?
We're not gonna say no to a, to a family or, or kid. It's, it's very, probably very similar to what we worked last year with athletics and Mr. TV Paul, and there are options, there would be options available.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wouldn't want to see it prevent someone from
Correct, it should not, not present, this $50 semester should not present, prevent, uh, a student to rent a district-owned instrument. And then the last item is Fund 35, termination benefits. Uh, there's authority that, almost like a, um, a treasurer's manual that have, gives all those exciting codes that everybody asks me about, um, all the time. So, this Fund 35 that I'm asking you to establish tonight is for termination benefits. There's the Ohio revised code part. The purpose is for, uh, a fund in which cash may be accumulated for paying termination benefits. That's your, um, mainly sick accruals, maybe some vacation or some personal time. Um, and this is for our staff that, uh, may be retiring or leaving the district. Uh, we did have two wonderful staff members leave the, um, retire last year, and it's kind of a weird timeframe that I didn't know, uh, how much we were gonna pay out till after the forecast and right before the budget. So, this Fund 35 gives the authority for the, my, for the treasurer's department, can do the research on any future, uh, benefit payouts, um, for our staff. And kind of, um, per, preparing for anybody that leave, does leave the district, especially if it's a, if it's an amazing, experienced staff member. And I'm not, uh, putting any appropriations or anything towards you today, this is just starting that process. And if, uh, the calculations determine that we would need some funds in that, that will be a transfer at a later month. So, it's gonna be a, a little bit of work and pro, uh, process, I'll inform you, everybody about it. But this is just starting, um, to establish it, because there, next month is our, my permanent, the district's permanent appropriation that I'll be passing next month, it's kind of getting ready for that.
Hey, Kyle, just, I wanted to say really quick, I, I wanted to give a shout-out to Kyle because I'm in year 32, and I've actually never heard of this fund, and it's funny, some people, when they see the word termination, they think of a negative connotation, but it's not, it's your retirements.
It's retirement.
And paying out, um, um, severance pays and sick leave, because there's portions of our negotiated agreements, both of our negotiated agreements, that we pay out severance and things like that. So, um, it's, it's actually, I, I think it's pretty smart to do this, and I didn't even know you could do it. That way, you're not, you know, because we have surprise retirements all the time, and that's not a negative statement, it's just some people get into man, they're like, you know what, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it quits. Well, then Kyle, as the treasurer, like saying, okay, well, I didn't realize that was gonna happen, no one did, and now we've gotta come up with this set amount of money, and we didn't budget for it, we didn't plan for it. So, kudos, Kyle, um, I've never heard of that until you explained it to me, and I think that, that's very insightful to put this in front of the board and, and pass for approval.
And this is a good expenditure, too.
Correct.
Because it, it does, there is a cap, there is a percentage, but it's also for amazing staff members that, um, may have not taken any of these accruals, so this is well-deserved for them as well. It's a well-deserved expenditure at the end.
Well, and it's an expense we'll have, it should be budgeted for, so that makes sense to me.
Kyle, I had, I had talked to you about this on the phone, and, and the one thing that I had mentioned is that we've always paid it anyhow. It's, it's
Correct.
Something that was paid out of the general fund, and it's just a good planning tool for you, so then you can see possibly what those encumbrances are gonna be or estimates. And we had talked to, that that is basically general fund money that moves over.
Correct.
And if it ever needs to move back, it can move back.
Correct.
You know, so, I, I'm all for it. We had talked years ago about having a roofing fund, and before we had the PI, um, levy on, and, and that's, I think, just great planning. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
He's done.
Pressure's on.
You're finished?
Yes. Thank you for your time.
The mic dropped.
The mic dropped.
Thank you, Mr. Kiffer. Uh, moving on to the chief business officers' report, and you are on the clock.
Well, thanks, Andreas and I are excited to be here.
You sound excited.
We are so excited. We're gonna be just discussing, uh, traffic and parking patterns with the new school year coming up. These will be maps that'll be released on the website, uh, probably after this meeting tonight, so people can see. These are traffic patterns for our schools, uh, traffic patterns for events at the high schools, specifically football games, things like that, so people know what's going on and the process and procedure there. And then we'll finish it by discussing, uh, some tech fees. Floor is yours.
Thanks, here we go. Uh, so we showed you some of these patterns last year, it's a reminder to, uh, our board and a reminder to our community for what we would love help with during school. If you're visiting main campus, and I put it in big, bold letters, all parent traffic should enter campus from Winsec Road to drop and pick up students, that is not the road that goes by the board office, that's Kirby. And so, we found, uh, last year especially, that if parent traffic comes in Winsec, it works a little bit better, especially for Deffer and elementary school traffic. So, we created a graphic of essentially what we did in the spring, um, to mitigate traffic concerns. Over on your left there, you know, is, uh, Winsec Road, as it comes into campus. Middle School is at the bottom, and then you see the bus garage, and then Deffer is to the north. Uh, most of the days, if not all of them, there was traffic control in that red area, which was usually CJ and/or myself, or both, mitigating traffic coming in, uh, dropping off in the morning for elementary and Deffer, which happens at the same time. And then we also found that there are a smaller number of parents that have both a Deffer and an elementary school student, so they go to Deffer first, then they come back up to the intersection, crossover, um, like a wild herd, and then into the parking lot. And the reason we ended up
That was prior to us out there for traffic control, full disclosure.
It was literally the Wild West. And so, what we ended up doing, and a lot of parents, you know, for the, when they arrived or sort of showed up for the first time, we got a lot of going to the elementary school. And so, we circled, or we put cars up in the, um, middle school parking lot, because we can't fit everyone in one line on Anna Lane. Here's what it looks like as you're entering campus, and so for, just as a visual, we basically don't want parents to go straight, or we don't allow them to go straight after a certain time, and then if you're going to Deffer, you're gonna go left. If you're gonna go to elementary school or middle school, SES, you're gonna go to the right. And we're just asking parents to be on the lookout for someone directing traffic. We do do a good job of being highly fluorescent and, uh, visible, we think. Some folks, uh, see us at the very last minute, so we love your
Andreas, and the other purpose for that is so our bus traffic can flow.
Yes.
Because it's hard for buses to turn and flow down that stretch from, uh, where the middle school lot ends and begins, if there's all kinds of traffic backed up there.
And that, that brings me to a good point, too. So, for this year, you know, in the spring, we ran, um, the same, we went from four-tier to two-tier, and we talked about that in the fall, and then we implemented that in the spring. We did not change the start and stop times of the buildings. This year, the start and stop times have shifted a little bit, so we are now running, um, what we would think of in transportation as a true two-tier, where all the buses go to one building, then they go to the next building, and there's a 10 or 15-minute gap. And so, for example, in the morning, we're picking up sixth or 12th grade, all the buses will go to the middle school, then they will travel to the high school and drop off, but the high school starts a little bit later. Then they do their second run, pick up K through or preschool through, uh, five, and then they're gonna all come into Deffer, drop at Deffer, then go to elementary school. So, as they're coming out of Deffer, as our bus fleet is coming out of Deffer, we send them down Anna Lane as a hard left, and then we ask parents to kind of go up into the middle school, or school parking lot. It seemed to work pretty well. We're hoping that with, uh, some renewed efforts to get people offloaded at the elementary school, maybe we won't get backed up as we have been in the past. So, again, this is just a visual. Just a quick reminder, uh, this intersection was a little bit new, because we added the stop sign last year, it's been in place now. For some time, it works super well. This is the intersection down at the elementary school, Kirby, Anna Lane, and then City Park, and then three additional lanes created by our parking lot at the elementary school. So, Anna Lane is that lane number two, uh, Kirby Lane is number one, where we would prefer not to have any parent traffic at all, because that makes that intersection very difficult in the morning, whereas parents line up along the curb, uh, by number two, and then, um, three, four, and five. Lane five there is then where our buses go in and out, and I have another graphic here coming up to make that a little bit more clear.
It'd be nice if there was a roundabout there.
That, that would be ideal, here's what that intersection looks like. And again, typically, for the first week or so, uh, we try to have someone down in this intersection as well. And so, likely, it'll be CJ and myself, we'll split, CJ will stay up at that Deffer middle school intersection, and then I'll be down here, because we do have a lot of parents that will just zoom right in on Kirby and try to sort of get right up to the curb, and it creates a dangerous situation, and it takes a couple of days to kind of share that message, just an idea of how many stop signs there are and where to see them, and we've, we've added one more on the left-hand side from, from this view, because we found that a lot of parents were going around stopped traffic, not realizing that it was a stopped intersection, and then just, you know, we had a couple of near crashes. So, looking at the school bus layouts and traffic layouts for each building, and then I couple that just with a reminder for the new start and stop times, uh, so that we have them, because they are new. Middle School, uh, is our building that starts first, that is a 7:20 a.m. start time, that's when school starts. So, that is not when parents and students should arrive, school starts at 7:20. And so, that is earlier than before, but we do that so that we can match our transportation capabilities. So, again, we are expecting traffic on campus, I would say, start, you know, starting around seven o'clock. So, we are also adjusting our, um, traffic, school warning lights on 303 accordingly, so we're redoing that schedule appropriately to match state law. Here's what the middle school looks like. In the past, the last year, we don't, we didn't really need any traffic control for parent traffic. As, uh, we did last year, we are still separating bus traffic from car traffic. So, if you're a parent dropping off, you will drop off in the front of the building, and then our buses will follow the loop out, uh, around the rear of the middle school, drop off on the, um, stadium side, and then continue out. And then our buses will take a right on Anna Lane and then exit, and for the first part of the year, will go diagonal, so they'll take a right off of campus, towards the police station, use diagonal to get over to the high school, because they're still doing construction on 14, so that is the, the quickest way now. Once construction is done, we will likely, and that'll be the decision of, um, Amanda Hall, whether or not she sees that to, to work better, they'll likely go left and then go down Superior, then go down 14. It'll be, that's a faster route by a minute or so. Middle School ends at 2:20, so that's when school ends. Again, in the afternoon, our buses will be lined up at the middle school, so all of the buses will be at the middle school, load the students at the same time as we're letting students go out to cars. It'll function very similar, uh, just you'll see a few more buses than this graphic up and around, uh, the middle school. Worked really well last year, we had sort of two sides of the middle school, kids, um, you know, exploded out a couple of doors and got on the buses and, and off we went. So, that's the middle school. High school then starts, so middle school starts 7:20, high school starts at 7:35. That's when the tardy bell rings, that's when the expectation is to be inside the classroom, ready to learn. So, that is a little different than last year. High school, traffic diagram, everyone comes in off of the light and/or the slip lane, depending on if it's open. Student parking to the south, bus traffic will go to the rear of the building and drop off at doors two and three, and then cars will drop off, uh, up front, doors one and 15. And then we closed the gate that we put in last summer, which I will say saved a number of very difficult traffic management situations and, and helped us tremendously, so that was well worth it. We have now, and I don't have that tonight, but we will publish the, sort of the traffic flow for event parking at the high school. Just wanted to get a few more details there, but that really helped us segregate traffic and keep it safe and not have, uh, folks drag racing sort of around the building. Uh, in the afternoon, high school ends at 2:35, and very similarly, our buses will come then in from the middle school, stage in the rear, pick up kids from doors two and three, and then exit out the main road, and parent traffic will continue to loop up in front, um, of the building. And then on Wednesdays, right, Mr. McKeon, or
He's not here tonight.
They all left. No, Mr. McKeon's here, we're still doing early release. Yes. So, Wednesdays will be the same, and so that'll have then a different traffic pattern. And I will say, what we saw, I feel like our parents learned a lot and kind of figured it out, especially in the spring, like what worked, and ended up not having as many parents pick up, and a lot of kids just kind of ride-share, and it worked out well, so. Uh, Henry Deffer then, almost an hour later, uh, that is the fourth and fifth grade, they start at 8:35, that is when instruction starts in the building. And they end at 3:15. Uh, I only have one map for Deffer, because it's the same, both AM and PM. Parents drop off and pick up in the rear of the building, and then our buses swing in to the front. We have patched that parking lot as best we can, and we're working, uh, CJ can maybe address some of that later. Uh, we're working, uh, the, the best we can, but we did get it patched over the summer, so it should be a little bit easier to, to drive on in general. And that seems to work well, Deffer does not have a tremendous amount of car riders, it's only two grade levels, and, and it seems to work okay. And then, uh, our last building, our elementary school, start time is 8:45. Again, that is when instruction starts. Uh, I would reference our website for sort of building open and teacher day and all those things. Instruction starts at 8:45, that is probably a little bit earlier than last year, so parents kind of just heads up. And they end at 3:30, that is when instruction ends. At the elementary school, our parents will come in, come in off of Anna Lane, drop off in front of the building, and our team there with, uh, Mrs. Abraham and Mrs. Wolf have some traffic control figured out to try to get kids out faster and then get kids loaded a little bit faster, parent pickup and drop off. Parent pickup and drop off. Our buses will travel into the loop like we have done for a number of years and load from the gymnasium at the elementary school. And that seems to have worked very well. Again, separating cars from buses seems to work well for us. Any, any questions on traffic patterns, diagrams?
I don't have a question, a comment, though. I mean, I just think parents this first week or two just need to take a breath.
Yep.
Go figure out the patterns. Everyone's going to get to class. They're going to let them in the buildings.
Yep.
So take a breath.
They won't be marked tardy, they won't be marked late. We'll be out in Neon trying to help the best that we can.
And there's always some delays, right? So new parents or parents that just forget from a couple of months ago, like there's going to be some delays. It's all new. There's new staff. There's new parents that are coming into the districts, so just take a breath. Everybody, it'll be all right.
Yep. And we try to, we try to get, be as patient as we possibly can. I would say that's true of our transportation fleet.
Yeah.
We are, I might still say tentatively, but Mrs. Hall and I are planning on releasing the bus routes tomorrow for the public. I worked with her all week and challenged her to make sure that we get it as, as right as we possibly can before we send it out. I had the experience with a neighboring school district that sent some route data out and it was blank. And I thought that is a bad idea and that is not what we want to do. So we want to make sure that we have it as, as ready as we possibly can. We do know that every year, there's 40 to 50 students that have moved and then never told us. So then we don't know, so we have them routed to their old house. We can fix that pretty quickly, but state law allows us also a week or two after school starts to really work out the routes or work out on any of those change orders. So it is not a, it's not ca, it should not be chaotic for us. And again, just patience, we'll get there. We're just asking you to, to wait a, a little bit. And again, our bus drivers, it, it takes a while to get really good at your route.
There'll be some delays in buses.
Yep, for sure.
Unfortunately, that happens.
And there'll be delays because of construction also. Like that, that's just going to be a thing, but we're doing our best to prepare adequately. We're utilizing these maps as a resource to try and help people. I know that for me, if I, like for my children's school, if a map was sent, it would help me navigate the parking lot.
Right, yes.
So we're hoping that that's utilized as a tool as well. We're doing our best to try and kind of plan and let people know, like here is what the plans are. And that there was thought that went into it and there's not just two crazy guys in Neon throwing their arms all over the place trying to get cars to move.
Well, that part's-
There is that, too. I mean, that's, that's fair.
Well, and in addition to Route 14, Green Tree Parkway is going to be ground down and down to one lane. I thought it would be done before school started, but it doesn't appear to be the case.
Portage Point is also-
Green Tree, we have a number of buses there. We just took our new staff through there and I looked to the right, I was like, oh, boy, here we go.
Oh, it's common, yeah.
And, and there's another apartment complex where they're doing lots of tight construction, Portage Point. And we're like, here we go. And so, you know, we worked through it. It's not uncommon, like it happens all the time and it's, but it'll just run slower. We, you will see in our language tomorrow, too, for the bus routes. And, and we know that that's a big deal. We're transporting 1,400 kids. That's about our standard for Streetsboro. We put language in there that the afternoon drop-off times are an estimate. And that takes about two to two and a half, three weeks to dial in. Because again, think about moving two grade levels through your building or in case of SES, and they're real little, four grade levels from the classroom to the gym, onto the right bus, everyone's sitting down on Wednesday. I think our, our team does a tremendous job and they know what they're doing.
And we have that app. I mean, the app is so, to track your bus, it's so nice to get on there. So if parents don't have that, I highly recommend it. It's saved me a few times. I, I just like watching to see where my kid's at, so, yeah, it's a great tool.
So we just ask for patience and then, and, and this is true of every school district. No, no district rolls it out on day one and it's tip-top perfect. Just doesn't happen, so.
And then we'll be releasing like a map for event parking and things like that here this week.
Yep, we just wanted to work out some of the final details. And the basic ideas, standardizing how we park cars during football games, upcoming band show, things like that.
And we'll work with Randy and Brett on that.
Yep. All right, CJ.
Our last agenda item is tech fees and Chromebook purchasing. So I know we've discussed this prior, but we would like to institute with the board's permission a general technology fee of $50 a student. As we know, we've gone one-to-one. Esser funding helped support us go one-to-one and then helped support another refresh of the Chromebooks. But Chromebooks have a three-year shelf life and we have to continuously do that. And sometimes it's 600, sometimes it's 500, sometimes it's 900. It just depends on where we're at. I will say, Dan Stitzel, Andreas, and Rick Alhouse do an excellent job in knowing what those life cycles are and how many we're going to need. But we don't have any more additional Esser funds coming in to continue to support that initiative. So we need some help with that. And when it comes to, you know, just keeping them refreshed, maybe having to do some repairs, things of that nature, that technology fee will go a long way in the general fund budget. Because we've never had like, you know, 50, 60, 70 this year. I think it was about $100,000 line item out of the general fund for Chromebooks to be purchased. So this is our way of continuing this great initiative and this great program. But we have to start this year because we're not going to have the budget next year to do that. So that's why we're asking this evening for the board to approve that tech fee. And then Kyle will make sure it's put in the right budget and then we'll know kind of what we have and what we may need in support from the general fund or from other avenues to make sure that we get the right refresh cycle.
And to piggyback off that, and Mr. Scorsopino and I talked, kind of like a, not a correction, but there is the last, this, there is an allocation for this current year-
Correct.
For Chromebooks from one of, from the Esser grant.
Yes. But that's why we're going to it this year, because next year we will need that. So we need the time to collect those fees in order to make that happen. So we're planning ahead. We don't want to get to next May and be like, uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Where are we going to get this?
And the nice thing is the heavy lifting was done by those Esser funds initially.
Yes, yes.
That got it in the hands of everyone.
Yes.
And typically, too, just for your appreciation, the purchasing cycle of the Chromebooks, we try to get with our vendors in, in the spring, because that's when the new models are rolled out. So instead of kind of making purchases late summer and the fall, we try to wait as, as long as we can for the benefit of ourselves. But then also knowing that if there's stock, if there's not stock, then we usually look at weeks, if not month and a half, for delivery.
And we want them here before students come in the door so we can issue them the new devices. So that's kind of our process.
Yep.
And if there's no questions, I won't mic drop like Kyle. I'll ask if there's questions. I think he was just a little too pumped and excited.
Oh, my goodness.
He said there weren't a lot to ask any questions.
I wanted to get under 10 minutes, so it was like 9:45.
Nice job.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Scorsopino. Moving on to board reports. And we have Mr. Bedford.
Me. Yeah, so Mr. TV Paw put together a nice write-up on our girls' golf team. So I think this is only their second or third year of the golf team, is that right? Fourth, okay. So I was behind, but that's, so this is exciting. I saw it on Facebook and Twitter, really excited for these girls. So the girls are off to the best start in their program history with a second-place finish at Cloverleaf in an 18-hole tournament and first place in the Spartan Invitational and two regular season wins. The team, this team's exceeding, I think, everyone's expectations with this, which is awesome. And I always like to see girls kick butt, so kudos to junior Samantha Clark, who's leading the squad in scoring average, but Megan Solley is also there. And junior Courtney Everett and Juliana Ryus, I hope I said that correctly, are very close in averages, which is contributing to this early success. And there's also a senior Abby Myers, who's improving each match. I think it's called a match, I don't know. And then freshman Claire Campbell is also progressing along in these competitive matches as well. So you always know school's starting when we've got the football players and the kids in, coming in and out of the gym and cross-country and then you see the band out there. So it's, it's nice to see all these kids back in action again. So congrats to this girls' team and I wish them all the success moving forward.
Ms. Bedford? Ms. Campbell?
It was Ms. Bedford.
Huh?
Oh, you did say thank you, Ms. Bedford.
I said thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Campbell, do you have a report?
I do. Educational Foundation, we did not meet for a grant meeting this summer, but we're picking up back in the fall. But I am happy to announce that Sergeant Clean, the new car wash, sold 1,120 memberships. That, and they made additional monetary donation on top of the 5,600 that they raised in the membership fees for a total of $7,700 to our foundation. So that is amazing. They are excited to be partnering with our district and with additional aspects of our district, like PTA and, and continue with Educational Foundation.
My car has never been cleaner, just so.
I'm telling you. And their beautiful sign is up, so it's good. And then for PTA, the only update I have that I'm aware of is there is a, as they know, 11th annual tailgate party will be held at the first home football game. So prior to that, so I'm sure there'll be more information coming out on that. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Fulton.
I have no report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Mr. Grimm.
If there's two things that you're going to remember tonight, please let it be the first thing I say, which is band cards. Get your band cards, okay? If you did not get a band card, if you're not familiar with it, it is a reusable discount card sold by the band as a fundraiser. If you buy a card now, it's reusable all the way until next August when you can buy another one. They're only $10. They will have tag day, a modified tag day. They're doing something different this year. So the band members will be out at different locations this Saturday, August 13th. They'll be at Lowe's from 11 to 2, at Sammy's Drive-Thru on Route 43 and Planet Fitness down in the Plaza from 12 to 4. And they are tentatively scheduled for Dairy Queen from 5 to 9. And they expect that they'll probably have some band cards available at the bicentennial celebration the following weekend. But just in case, get out Saturday and get your band card if you don't already have one. Continuing on with the band, they've had rehearsals continuing over the last several weeks and they're in preparation for marching band season, which is underway. They've been provided with schedules for after-school practices and events. They will be performing, of course, August 19th at the home football game versus Gerard and then every Friday night, home and away football game through the end of the season. They'll also be performing at the bicentennial parade. And they've got three band shows scheduled, three weeks in a row in October. October 10th, the Medina Band Show. October 17th, the very first ever Streetsboro Band Show right here in our stadium. And then the following week, the Aurora Band Show on the 24th. And then concert band season starts right after that. From the city, we mentioned the bicentennial celebration. That'll take place Saturday and Sunday, August 20th and 21st. The parade kickoff the weekend starting at 10 a.m. Saturday with fireworks later that evening around 10 p.m. at City Park. And the other thing to remember, number two, is just how important it is for training. And, and we did something good, if I can just mention briefly, Mr. Dahlbal, about the ASER training that we did yesterday, active shooter, active threat training. We, we did it here at the high school and it was conducted by the Porch County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. There's about 35 people involved. And this was the first time that the program was presented with school district and service department employees present. Usually it's just police and firefighters. But we do things a little different in Streetsboro and we have a good plan with our school district. We also include our service department in our, in our emergency response plans, not just for the schools, but anywhere in the, in the city. So we had about 35 people and I think the schools had the biggest showing. A lot of administrators were there. And so it was a four-hour tabletop exercise involving a scenario with, with our high school building. But it, it applies to every, to every school building. And, and I just bring it up to say thanks to everybody that, that, that was able to spend the morning there and was involved. And the community doesn't always realize what's going on behind the scenes with the school district. And there's been a lot of talk in the news lately about schools that are unprepared for, for an event. And while you may not always hear what Streetsboro and Streetsboro schools are doing in preparation for an emergency, just know it's been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. So I just want to say thanks again for everybody participating. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. And if you notice the non-digital signs that were out front, non-digital signs. There's an ice cream social this Sunday at City Park from 2 to 4. It's a non-digital sign. I believe there's one at the, at the square also. So just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, you know, it's the annual ice cream social. It's a good time to get out, meet some of the community. And some of the board members will hopefully be there and some school officials. So hopefully see you there on Sunday. And that's all I have to report. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Figure out how to use this. Is recommended Board of Education approve the consent agenda items B through M.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? I will comment on the donations. I just wanted to note there Staples donated 100 boxes of school supplies. Each contained 19 items such as pencils, pens, glue, erasers, and markers. That has to be a fairly large amount of products. I just want to say thank you to Staples and the others that did donate as well. Any other comments?
Mr. Violi.
Yes.
I did want to apologize for, that I did not, Mrs. Campbell mentioned I did not put the donation from Sergeant Clean on there for $7,700.
Absolutely.
So thank you to Sergeant Clean.
And please call the roll.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes, motion carried. Moving on to superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, I have three. Item A is recommended the Board of Education approve the following employees for FMLA.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Abstain. Motion carried.
Item B is recommended the Board of Education approve the following game workers and rates for the 22-23 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Abstain.
Mr. Violi?
Yes, motion carried.
And item C. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the hiring of the following contingent upon all certification licensure requirements being met.
I'll move.
Second.
First and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Abstain. Motion carried.
That concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Dahlbal. Moving on to treasurer's recommendations.
Item A, fund transfers. It is recommended the Board of Education approve fund transfers.
I'll move.
I'll second.
First and a second, comments?
Sorry, hold on. These fund transfers are, I apologize for, is for the cheerleading for high school and middle school accounts. On our books, they are separate from athletics. But they, the cheerleaders, it's still a varsity sport and they are still, they still pay, paid a participation fee. To me, it's just a, a good accounting practice for, to be rolled up under the athletic, in the, within the athletic fund. I talked to Mr. TV Paw. I mentioned to Principal Taylor, Principal McCann, and everybody is in agreement. And so this is transferring the funds from the high school and middle school cheer funds underneath the umbrella of the athletic fund.
Thank you, Mr. Kiffer. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Sir Violi?
Yes, motion carried. That's funny.
The band?
No, the next one's the instrument fee.
I was like, are those the instruments?
Item B, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the district-wide instrumental fee for $50 per semester from grades five through 12 at the discretion of the band directors. directors.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item C is recommended the Board of Education establish Fund 35 for termination benefits.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Camp, Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item D, amended appropriations for fiscal year '23. It is recommended by the treasurer that the Board of Education approve amended appropriations for fiscal year '23, and estimated resources will be adjusted as needed.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes. Motion carried. Moving on to chief business officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Violi. I have one recommendation this evening. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve a technology fee of $50 for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
No comment.
No further comments. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes. Motion carried. Moving on to new business. Hearing none. Old business, I'll just throw it out there for the digital sign information.
Think we could get one of those?
He could have been his birthday present.
I think we have one.
Listen, if we, if we had it, I would know about the ice cream social.
We have a digital sign, don't we?
Right.
And doesn't it work?
There's dust on it.
We, we do have one. It's been plugged in. I've seen it come up. We have not, like, programmed it and typed in it because it's not out there. But it has turned on.
I do believe that they're still working on something at planning. I think it's going to go to planning and zoning in their next meeting, I'm being told. So, we should hopefully see something soon. I know that I've said that in the past, but I will mention it until we get something concrete.
I believe that Mrs. Bedford was...
If we don't have a sign by your next birthday, there's going to be a problem, right?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bedford was recommending putting "Happy Birthday, Mr. Violi" on that sign.
Well, it could have said "Ice Cream Social this Sunday."
Ice cream for Violi.
We had some static signs for that.
Yeah. We, non, 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 non-digital.
Static.
Yeah. Just, all kidding around. I mean, I know that the city is working on it, and we should be seeing something soon.
And we appreciate them.
Yes.
Working on that.
Absolutely. Moving on to board president's recommendations. Item number A is recommend the Board of Education approve the appointment of Brian Violi as delegate and Tracy Campbell as alternate delegate to the 2022 Annual Business Meeting of the Ohio School Board Association's Capital Conference in Columbus, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Bedford?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes. Motion carried. And moving on to item number B, executive session. It is recommend the Board of Education to enter into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official, and to consider details relative to security